Okay, we'd like to call to order the October 17th, 2016 Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting, even though it doesn't feel like a regular meeting because we're in a different room, but we're undergoing some repairs in the regular chamber, so we're meeting in the multipurpose room tonight. Welcome, it's good to see such a good crowd of folks here tonight. Tonight, we have a group of young Marines with us who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're very pleased to have with us tonight Reverend Daniel Wilson from Bogers Chapel United Methodist Church to lead us in our invocation.
Let us pray. God of grace and God of love, we pause this evening and we come before you. We come with thankful hearts and we just want to say thank you for the many gifts that you pour out upon us each day, for the wonderful sunshine, the beautiful blue sky, the ways that you remind us of your love. God, we thank you for this place in which we live, we call home. You know, God, as we come together to be about the business of this town, we pray that you are with us. And God, we never forget to pray for those men and women who protect our rights, our freedoms, those who keep us safe. So come, oh God, be among us tonight. We thank you, we praise you, and with our whole hearts, we love you. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much Reverend Wilson, we appreciate you being with us tonight. First item up is the approval or correction of the minutes, and you all have copies of those before you. What would be your pleasure on those?
I move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Next up is the approval of the agenda, including the changes on page 447. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I think county manager was going to update us on some changes.
On your consent agenda, number two on your consent agenda, the staff has amended that, there was two portions of that, one was the salary tables and the other one was the discussion concerning employee retirement and health insurance. We have removed or recommended you remove the discussion and the approval of anything related to the health insurance and retirement system, and only consider the salary tables. We've met with several of our employees and had many other discussions outside of that meeting, so we want to go back and do some more research and then come back to you hopefully in November as your work session with an adjusted or an amended presentation.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. I would like to point out that we do, we're very pleased to have with us at the table tonight, one of our youth commissioners, Macy Yury from AL Brown High School is with us tonight. Welcome, we're glad to have you at the table.
Thank you, it's a pleasure to be here.
Okay, next we have our recognitions and presentation. First, we have a planning and development weatherization day proclamation, and I will read that proclamation now. Whereas October is National Energy Awareness Month and October 30th is designated as National Weatherization Day, and whereas the county of Cabarrus has a longstanding commitment to conserve its resources and to help low-income households through its weatherization assistance program, and whereas the state of North Carolina has administered the weatherization assistance program since its inception in 1976, providing a variety of state and federal resources through numerous community action agencies, housing authorities, and departments of local government that serve people in every county in the state. And whereas it is important to recognize the importance of those programs that ensure that all residents, especially those living at or below the federal poverty level, have the opportunity to live in energy-efficient, healthy, safe, and comfortable homes as provided for by the weatherization assistance program. Now therefore be it resolved that the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim October 30th, 2016 as weatherization day in Cabarrus County and urge all citizens to join in this observance. Do I have here a motion to approve that proclamation? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Next up, we have from Soil and Water Conservation District, the 2016 Governor's Conservation Achievement Award recipient, and we are pleased to have Rose Rumel Yury with us to present the award.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you. I'm the Secretary of the Concord Wildlife Alliance, and we are an affiliate of the North Carolina Wildlife Federation, and I'm here tonight to brag about Cabarrus County a little bit and to give an award. One of the great strengths of the North Carolina Wildlife Federation is its affiliate network, which spans a broad range of organizations and agencies and other entities that share the Federation's commitment to wildlife. That big tent approach is certainly symbolized with the Cabarrus County Soil and Water Conservation District, a part of the nation's very first soil and water conservation district. This agency of scientists, land managers, and communications professionals has put the wise use of natural resources front and center in Cabarrus County. It has received a Partners for Green Growth grant, a Clean Water Management Trust Fund grant to acquire the Suthur Wet Prairie for inclusion in the state's nature reserve program. It partners with Davidson College in its recognized reptiles and amphibians conservation outreach, and it works with more than 7,000 schoolchildren a year to teach about farmland preservation and conservation initiatives. The Cabarrus County Soil and Water Conservation District is a 2016 North Carolina Wildlife Federation Affiliate of the Year. I would like for you to give everyone a big hand. Tonight, we have with us Dennis Testerman and Daniel McClellan, who are staff, and we also have two board members, Ned Hudson and Louis Suthur, and I would like for them all to come up here and get an award. And this is certificate. And this is a letter of standing. Thank you very much. Anybody else want to say thank you? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Rose, for being with us tonight, and congratulations to our Soil and Water Conservation District. These guys do more than I think most of our citizens in Cabarrus County really realize to protect our environment and do a lot of positive things in our community, and we appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I was going to make a comment, just for whatever it's worth, on this coming Wednesday, Channel 22, we're going to do our edition of Out and About, and it's going to be on Cabarrus County Soil and Water Conservation District, and I believe it's going to be out at the Dan Barrier Farm, and so for those of you that want to learn about what Cabarrus County Conservation and Soil District's all about, tune in to see that whenever they air it. So I'm privileged to be able to do that part on Wednesday.
Thank you for pointing that out. We get a lot of comments about our Out and About series in different places in the county that we highlight. Next, we have on our agenda Red Ribbon Week 2016, and we have a proclamation regarding that. I think that is the area of interest of our young Marines that are with us tonight, who led us in the pledge. Red Ribbon 2016 Proclamation. Whereas communities across America have been plagued by the numerous problems associated with illicit drug use and those that traffic in them, and whereas there is hope in winning the war on drugs, and that hope lies in the education and drug demand reduction, coupled with the hard work and determination of organizations such as the Mecklenburg County Young Marines of the Marine Corps League to foster a healthy, drug-free lifestyle, and whereas governments and community leaders know that citizen support is one of the most effective tools in the effort to reduce the use of illicit drugs in our communities, and whereas the red ribbon has been chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Enrique Kiki Camarena, a Drug Enforcement Administration Special Agent, who was murdered in the line of duty, and represents the belief that one person can make a difference. And whereas the Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in 1988 to encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention and reduction efforts, and whereas October 23rd through 31st has been designated National Red Ribbon Week, which encourages Americans to wear a red ribbon to show their support for a drug-free environment. Now therefore be it resolved that the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim October 23rd through 31st as Red Ribbon Week in Cabarrus County, and urges all citizens to join in this special observance. Do I hear a motion that we approve this proclamation as red? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we're very happy to have all of you with us here tonight. Is there anybody that would like to say anything about the proclamation?
If you would come to the microphone so it can be on television. Oh, okay. I'm Jonathan Henderson, I'm the unit commander for the Mecklenburg County Young Marines. We are a premier youth organization. Our goal is to teach kids to live a drug-free lifestyle and by learning teamwork, leadership, and discipline. We do a lot of emphasis on being drug-free. Every month, we have BDR classes, so kids are aware of how this affects your body, even your life, even your family. So if they're aware how this impacts everything around you, even your future, so we want these kids just to get out and learn how to be the best they can be and be good citizens. So they're our leaders for tomorrow. So we're just ensuring that we're getting them in the right direction, and have some items to pass to y'all, if y'all don't mind. Thank you.
We thank you for your efforts leading the group and appreciate the young people being willing to be involved. Next on our agenda, we have informal public comments, and I have not had any yellow cards turned in tonight, but if there's anybody that would like to speak, I would welcome you to do so now.
I forgot the motion, I'm sorry. For those of you who happen to know Robin Hayes, he also won an award from the North Carolina Wildlife Federation, so please, if you know him, tell him, congratulations. He won Sportsman of the Year. Robin is a lifelong hunter and angler, and he's a champion for sportsman and conservation. From working on his own land for wildlife and sporting opportunities to leading efforts for marine resources and wild deer protection, he's the epitome of a sportsman conservationist, so please tell him congratulations if you see him.
Great, thank you, Rose. We'll certainly mention that. We're very honored to have quite a bit of recognition for Cabarrus County in a very positive way. Thank you very much. Okay, seeing no one come forward for informal public comments, we will move to approval of our consent agenda, which you all have before you, and we have noted the changes that have been made to that, and of course, these are all items that we discussed at length at our work session two weeks ago. Do I hear a motion that we approve the consent agenda, including the changes?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda along with the changes noted by the county manager.
Great, thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move to new business. First up, we have two items from Department of Health and Human Services in the transportation area. First one is fiscal year 1853-11 Community Transportation Administration Grant, and Bob Bushy will talk with us for a moment before we open our public hearing.
Thank you. This year, our community transportation grant is for a total amount of $139,640 with a 15% local match of $20,946. This grant helps cover costs such as salaries, office supplies, general administrative.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Bushy? And of course, this is an item that we also discussed at our work session. At this time, I will open the public hearing and then invite anyone that would like to speak on this matter to the microphone. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion to approve the fiscal year 1853-11 Community Transportation Administration Grant application. Correct?
Correct. I move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Next, we have the Community Transportation Capital Grant, and Bob will talk with us about that.
This is the grant through the state of North Carolina that we purchase our vehicles. This year, we are requesting three vehicles at a total cost of $184,800, local match 10%, $18,480.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Bushy? Just for clarification, the first one was the 1553-11 administration funding, and the second one is the 5311 capital funding, correct?
Correct.
Right. Okay, at this time, I would enter, well, first of all, we have to have the public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing and invite anybody to the podium that would like to speak. Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, and now entertain a motion to approve the application for the fiscal year 1853-11 Community Transportation Capital Grant. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, next, we have Jason Burnett with us to talk about Chapter 22, Civil Emergencies' Code of Ordinances update.
Chairman Morris and Commissioners, Cabarrus County Emergency Management proposes to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 22, Civil Emergencies of the Code of Ordinances in order to align with changes in the North Carolina general statutes as they relate to emergency management.
Okay, and this is all to bring us in compliance with the state ordinances, right?
That is correct.
Right, okay. Any other questions for Mr. Burnett? Okay, this also calls for a public hearing, so at this time, I will call and will open the public hearing. Is there anybody here that would like to speak on that matter? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion that we adopt the changes to Chapter 22, Civil Emergencies Code of Ordinances. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have from Planning and Development, Proposed Amendments to the Zoning Ordinance. This also will require a public hearing, and we have Susie Morris with us to answer any questions and tell us what we're looking at.
Good evening. If you remember, this is a series of text amendments that we discussed at the work session. There are 13 different amendments, some of them are typos that need to be corrected, others are issues that we needed to deal with because model ordinances changed either with the state or with FEMA that we need to adopt. Commissioner Morris, I don't know if you want to go through each one, or if you just would like for me to take questions, or how would you prefer to handle?
I think with the amount of time that we spent on this at our work session, and the amount of time that all of us have spent reading this 400 pages, I think it is, I believe we can just open it up to questions. Does anyone have questions they'd like to ask Ms. Morris about these changes?
I don't really have any questions, but I will just kind of confirm that the majority, I think, of the things that were done or that are proposed kind of have made it a little bit more owner-friendly for the majority. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, ma'am. Yes. You know, easier for people to read, hopefully, easier for people to be able to understand, developers, citizens, and then also, you know, some of those standards, kind of taking a look at that and looking at what is, you know, what can we do maybe to help the small businesses?
I had one question about Chapter 7, Page 5, which is Page 286, I think, in our agenda. Under the bed and breakfast category, there was a provision added in there that said the site must contain at least 10 acres, which sounded excessive to me. I was curious as to the rationale behind that suggestion.
Again, when we discussed that at the work session, it was in reaction to the type of, to the type of comments that we've heard from the general public at the public hearings related to reception facilities with bed and breakfast, a lot of the accessory uses or auxiliary uses would be the same as these reception-type facilities if they chose to have those type of, host those type of events. So that's where that came from. We currently have five acres for a reception facility, and again, it was because we've had complaints about noise and parking next to neighbors, so we just proposed the 10 as a way maybe to head off some of that if someone did decide to do a bed and breakfast with those types of auxiliary uses.
Right, but if I wanted, and of course, I look at most of that as coming under the reception venues, events, which is addressed specifically in another part of the ordinance, right?
It is, if that is the primary use.
If that is the primary use. So to me, if it's just exclusively a bed and breakfast that does not involve any events, just people coming in to stay overnight, they would still have to comply with this part of the ordinance or ask for a variance, right?
Yes, sir, they would need to comply with what's proposed if they were proposing to be a bed and breakfast, because there's a difference between the definition of a reception facility and a bed and breakfast.
Right, and the definition of a bed and breakfast would not include those items included in a reception facility, right?
The primary definition for the bed and breakfast is that the state says there's X amount of people that can be there, X amount of rooms, and people that can spend the night. Reception facilities do not allow folks, it's a business, so it's not a hotel and it's not a bed and breakfast, but the bed and breakfast could have some of those same uses as an accessory use to the bed and breakfast. The reception facility could not have people spend the night, but the bed and breakfast could have a reception that the people could spend the night.
Okay, so the bed and breakfast could have a reception?
Correct.
Okay, that's a little different than the way I might have understood the definition. Yes, ma'am?
I'm a little confused on that myself. If it's strictly, if someone wants to open strictly a bed and breakfast overnight, doesn't intend to have receptions, doesn't have receptions, are they still required to do the 10 acres?
The way that it is currently written, they would be, because as a bed and breakfast, we can consider that the primary use, but understand that people may have weddings at a bed and breakfast, or may have teas at a bed and breakfast, or may have fundraisers at a bed and breakfast that would then be auxiliary to the bed and breakfast, where the reception facility is intended to solely be a business that supports those types of uses. You know, graduation parties, events, weddings, corporate retreats, things like that. So they're two very different definitions.
So what this ordinance is doing is eliminating the opportunity for someone to have a bed and breakfast in a town, downtown area, most likely, let's say Union Street.
We don't really have properties that have those same characteristics. The properties that we deal with are in unincorporated Cabarrus County and out in the country, more or less.
Okay, that does make a difference there.
So I'm one that's bothered, you know, by the 10 acre a little bit, you know, because it just seems like a lot. If it was a true bed and breakfast, you know, I wouldn't think of them having those events, but I certainly hear what you're saying and did not necessarily take, you know, think in terms of that. So is there any way to say if it's a true bed and breakfast, or, I mean, how do you, I mean, I get what you're doing, but it seems like a, I don't know, there seems, there ought to be a common, more common ground, I think, I don't know.
I think the definition, we could add language to the definition that would say that a reception, I'm sorry, that a bed and breakfast could not be a reception facility if that's the concern. And then if someone did want to do that, they would have to meet the stricter of the two standards.
And then if you did that, you could go with a smaller amount, or not even, if they're true bed and breakfast, not necessarily even put a restriction on it because they wouldn't be making the noise.
We could add a, we could add a sentence that says, you know, reception, for reception facilities, see that particular use, instead of the bed and breakfast. You know, because we've told folks, if you want to have a reception facility where people can spend the night, you have to pursue both a reception facility permit plus a bed and breakfast permit. So I think we could flip it and say, if you are a bed and breakfast and you want to have the reception-type uses, that again, you would have to pursue both of those permits instead of one on its own. And we could administer that without any issues, I think, if your concern is the acreage, if you're interested in, I know you had mentioned that you thought it was a lot at the work session.
Right, if they're just a true bed and breakfast, because you don't think they're going to be making, you know, I mean, it's not going to be like there's a party facility, so I do think that seems like a lot, that's just me.
Yeah, I think, Susie, correct me, is, if it's a true bed and breakfast where they're just renting rooms and they may have served breakfast on the patio or something like that, or a tea, that would be the norm. The exception would be the ones that are holding the large event, so therefore, the exception would be, if you want to hold the larger events, then it's either additional standards, or they would be the ones that would have to ask for the variance versus the one that is just wanting to do a bed and breakfast.
Right, I think, you know, again, if we strictly hold it to definition and say, you know, receptions, to hold receptions and direct them to the other part of the ordinance where reception facilities are talked about and what you have to do for that and the standards that you have to meet, you know, they kind of go back and forth. If you went to a reception facility where people would spend the night, you also have to be permitted as a bed and breakfast. to be permitted as a bed and breakfast. If you want a bed and breakfast and have receptions there, you know, again, we could, we could make that distinction, that if you're a bed and breakfast, you're a bed and breakfast, and if you want a reception facility, then you have to follow this set of standards.
Is there a acreage requirement on the reception facilities?
It currently is five, and that was also a proposed text amendment that didn't make it to you all, but that was also proposed to increase based on comments we've received at public hearings and, you know, what our text amendment committee is thinking is appropriate, which would probably have been-
So it was five and it stayed five, as of now, you didn't come back for a change?
We didn't come with the change, but it would have, it would be proposed to be larger because of noise complaints, traffic complaints, people parking next to other properties, so it probably would have landed at least at ten or greater.
So if we would prefer that it be the way we've just discussed, where they can have the bed and breakfast, and then they have to apply for the reception to have receptions and, and follow those if that's what they choose, how does that process work with this situation? Do we vote against the, all of these, or just choose this one to?
I think you could-
Hold out on?
I think you could make a motion and direct staff to do that, and then we could go back and, and make the line, again, it's, we're already doing that with the reception facilities, so it's not going to be that, that big of a, of a transition if you wanted it to the five acres, keep the standards like they are, and then, you know, if somebody wants to be a reception facility, then they, along with the bed and breakfast, they would have to apply for both permits. If they're just a, a bed and breakfast, you know, having guests, teas, the normal kind of stuff that a, the quaint bed and breakfast would do, then they would not have to do that, and we can, we can just add that, a sentence to the definition. If it's, I have my ordinance, if you would like for me to read you the definition of bed and breakfast, I can, and I don't, it may actually, you know, I know that the reception facility says that you can't spend the night there, that it's not intended to be that type of use, but I'm not sure with the bed and breakfast if the definition kind of cross-references back like reception facility does to bed and breakfast.
So as a suggestion, what I would, Susie, maybe you can give them a petition number for that particular one, and what you could do is table that, and we could bring that back to you with the reception facility, any proposed amendments to the reception facilities, and you could consider those together.
In this particular case, the amendments that you have are tied to several different things that are going on in those other parts, so if you did want to table it, I think it would just be that, that particular one, but again, I think as staff, we have the direction, we've heard the direction, and we can, we can handle that.
Well, I think that we do need to table the part about the bed and breakfast, that part, and the other part, since you hadn't brought it to us, you know, it could, like Jonathan said, it could be combined, that we could look at it together. But I wanted to say just a couple of things about the bed and breakfast part. I agree with Commissioner Honeycutt and Ms. My, you know, about the acreage part. Of course, first off, I don't know of any bed and breakfast in the county area, in the unincorporated areas to start with, I don't know of any. But the hypothetical example would be if you've got an older couple living out in the county, and they got a, for whatever reason, they got this, maybe they had a bunch of kids, I don't know, they had a five-bedroom house, and it's just a single couple living there, and if they wanted to offer their home, and if they didn't have five acres or one acre or ten acres, then that would be restricting them to do that. I mean, it would be no different, in my opinion, than if they had those kids that live in New York or in New Jersey or wherever they live coming home for Christmas, other than it would be on a more regular basis because it would be available as a bed and breakfast. And I don't, I'm not for putting more restrictions on people that own their own home, own their own property, and if they are isolated complaints, which I don't know about any of that, because, you know, you guys deal with it all the time, but I think that that would need to be dealt with on, on an individual basis. You might, could require, if it's going to be something that's really causing a lot of problems, it could maybe do some screening or some burm-ing or something at, at their expense, if that's what they want to do, but I don't think we need to take that away from them, to take the opportunity away from them. And like I said earlier, I don't want to be redundant, but I don't want also to take away from people's rights. If they got the house, four-bedroom, five-bedroom, and they want to offer that to the public as a bed and breakfast, they ought to be able to do that. And so I don't know how to make the amendment to the text amendment that you were talking about, other than just send it back, let you guys work on it, and then bring it back to us along with the one for receptions and that type of thing, where that, you know, bed and breakfast is overnight, and receptions, of course, are just for the reception, and everybody goes home. But if you, that's just my recommendation, Mr. Chair, for whatever that's worth.
Might I suggest that, that we go ahead with our public hearing, that we've advertised on all of these changes, and then, once we've gotten that input, then we can follow staff's advice and table that portion to come back to us at a later meeting. Did you have any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. We have advertised a public hearing on these proposed amendments, and at this time, I will open the public hearing and invite anyone to the microphone that would like to speak on this matter. Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and at this time, would accept a motion, and this is how I think we would word it, to approve the aforementioned proposed text amendments, text two thousand sixteen zero zero one through text two thousand sixteen zero 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 thirteen, with the exception of text two thousand sixteen dash zero 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 seven, which shall be tabled until a later date.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Some of that, if we could clarify that it's just that particular piece-
Uh huh.
-of number seven, so that we could go ahead and move forward with the rest of it?
With the other pieces of that one.
Yes, yes, please.
So then, would it be appropriate to amend that motion, which I just read, to say, to table, with the exception of text two thousand sixteen zero 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 seven, the portion regarding bed and breakfast on page, Chapter seven, page five of thirty-five, and shall be tabled until a later date? Does that cover?
Yes, sir, so that we can move forward with the rest of those, because it's tied to signs and some other different things.
Right, okay, great, okay, do you-
I will amend the motion.
Great, okay, we have a, the amendment is accepted and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we look forward to getting a chance to talk about it some more.
There is one other clarification, you're removing the flood damage protection ordinance from the Code of Ordinances, wasn't that part of this? Yeah, so there, you need to, you actually need to adopt the ordinance, amending that ordinance.
The new one switched.
Yeah, you just, what you're doing is removing it, so it's an ordinance, you're adopting the ordinance, amending the Code of Ordinances.
And there are also ordinances for all of the other amendments that were proposed.
Right, which were included in that motion?
Correct, text amendment, the first one was the one to combine them together.
Right.
So, so I think Mr. Marshall is looking for a, a separate motion for the county code.
That's right. I'm going to find the page in just a moment.
So we would need to adopt-
That's actually page two thirty-three in your agenda.
Two thirty-three, and that amendment is text two thousand sixteen zero 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 two, is that correct?
Both one and two.
Both one, okay, so we included one through thirteen.
Then two.
So do we need, did that include it?
I think, ma'am, I think you're going to need an actual motion to amend the Code of Ordinances for this ordinance, right?
Okay, so let me take a stab at a motion and see if it covers it. A motion to adopt proposed amendment text two thousand sixteen zero 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 two, which combines zoning subdivision flood ordinances and rename Cabarrus County Development Ordinance.
Mr. Chair, one and two?
One and two.
One is the one that removes it from the county code, two is the one that combines the ordinances together.
Right, okay, gotcha, and that's here, but it's just in a different order. So let me take another stab at that motion. To approve proposed amendment text two thousand sixteen zero 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 one, which moves the flood ordinance from county code to zoning ordinance update, and text two thousand sixteen dash zero 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 two, which combines zoning subdivisions flood ordinances and renames Cabarrus County Development Ordinance.
And I would add, and the, and the related ordinance to do that.
And the related ordinance to do that. I said ordinance about four times, so that should be enough to confuse everyone. Okay, okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? See, everybody understands it perfectly now. So all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up are appointments to boards and committees, and if you'll give me a moment to bring that up here. Okay, the, this is for the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. The terms of appointment for at-large juvenile crime prevention council, JCPC members Hunter Moore and Angela Ward expired September thirtieth, two thousand sixteen. Both are willing to serve another term. Ms. Ward has served on the JCPC since two thousand seven. An exception to the length of service provision of the appointment policy will be needed for her, excuse me. An application to serve on the JCPC has also been received from Tressie McLean Hickey. Ms. McLean Hickey works at Cardinal Innovations as a system of care coordinator and is eligible to fill the vacant area mental health director designee position. She resides in Mecklenburg County. An exception to the residency provision of the appointment policy would be needed for her. At its September twenty-first, two thousand sixteen, meeting the JCPC voted on recommendations for these positions, and you have a letter from the JCPC chair attached to your agenda. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to reappoint Hunter Moore and Angela Ward to the JCPC as at-large representatives for two-year terms ending September thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, including an exception to the length of service provision of the appointment policy for Angela Ward.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes, and I would now entertain a motion to appoint Tressie McLean Hickey to the JCPC as an area mental health director designee representative for a two-year term ending September thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, including an exception to the residency provision of the appointment policy.
I'll move for approval.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Okay, you have a number of reports attached to your information tonight, and at this time, I would be happy to receive updates from commission members who serve as liaisons to municipalities or on various boards and committees. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Honeycutt?
I serve as a liaison to the Cabarrus County Senior Advisory Council, and today we had a meeting, and they talked a little bit about the SHIP program, which is the seniors health insurance information program, and it's a consumer information division of North Carolina Department of Insurance that assists people with Medicare, Medicare Part D, Medicare supplements, Medicare Advantage, and long-term care insurance questions. So they help citizens recognize and prevent Medicare billing areas and possible fraud and abuse as well. The open enrollment period is from October fifteenth to twelve-seventh, so if anyone has any questions, I'm going to give you a number that you can call. If you've got a pencil nearby, it's seven oh four nine two zero one four zero zero. And the little hints to that is that when the recording picks up, you hit seven and then two, and that should take you to a person who can help answer some of these questions if you need it. Again, that number, seven oh four nine two zero one four zero zero, then press seven and two.
Great, thank you. Any other reports or updates? Okay, any other general comments by board members? I will point out that we do have a number of vacancies on various boards and committees. You can find those listed on Cabarrus County website, and we encourage folks to get involved and take a look at those openings and apply if it's something that you think you may be able to contribute. Once again, would like to welcome Macy Urie, who's with us tonight, as well as we have a number of other of our youth commissioner members who have been here during the meeting. I think they slipped out when I turned my back, but it's always good to have them with us. We do have need of a closed session tonight, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session regarding pending litigation, acquisition of real property and personnel, as authorized by North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen, point eleven, A, three, five, and six. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. We are now in closed session. Thank you.